This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 21st. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E-Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on the webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councillors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until June 30th, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you're participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann.
Peg Coniff. Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jazick.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peake.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Here.
Okay, and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance or take a moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it doesn't appear that we have any minutes, so that would bring us right to public speak time. So if you have anything you'd like to address the council that is not a part of our public hearings tonight, please address the council, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. I am Kathy Kuzinski from Overlook Drive. I had two things that I wanted to bring up. First, I wanted to thank their council for the position on the lithium battery project. That was a great success and really important for our community. I would ask that you also consider supporting the proposed legislation stopping any further citing across the state until they can get a better grip on the safety and the efficacy of these battery storage units. There's a number of small towns in central Mass that are currently being pushed to cite them there, one very close to the Quabin, not necessarily going to directly impact us, but if there was a fire in that one, it would directly impact the drinking water in the Quabin environment, which would be a huge environmental disaster. So there is proposed legislation before our state. We've asked our state senator and state representative to support it, and it would prevent any further citing until additional work can be done on the safety issues. So that's, thank you for your position on that. I would also ask that we consider, as a city, going to hybrid for all boards and committee meetings. There's a number of committee meetings that only are in person, and then there are some that are just hybrid, and the planning board often will do just hybrid meetings. I think it's important for people to be able to participate in person, if that's what they want to do, but also there are a number of people in our community that aren't able to participate in person, and I think having all meetings for boards and committees and city meetings be hybrid would be a wonderful step forward for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speak time?
Good evening, councillors. Dan Riss, 26 Line Street, Precinct 5. I'm here for two reasons. To speak to you first about my hope that you will appoint Chad Alexander as police chief. As retired city councillor with a great deal of experience with our police department, both personally and professionally, I'm asking you to confirm Chad Alexander is our next police chief unanimously. First, I must compliment the mayor on a very transparent and independent search process which takes away the notion that Chad's appointment was somehow ordained from the beginning. In fact, Chad had to go through rigorous interview process against other very qualified applicants. In spite of this, Chad Alexander rose to the top of the group as the most qualified and is more than ready to serve. Unlike an outside new chief, Chad has East Hampton roots that can lead on day one. He knows his city, he knows his responsibilities to East Hampton, and he is ready to adjust policies to the new realities of policing in the modern era. His emphasis on community policing, on conflict resolution and de-escalation, and on continued diversity of the ranks will be welcomed by our residents. Please appoint Chad Alexander. The city and its residents won't be disappointed. Secondly, I'm here to speak to you about the budget. I am here to express my satisfaction with the mayor's budget as presented to you. Is it perfect? No budget is. As longtime finance committee chair, I think I have the credibility to analyze it as necessary to the financial stability of our city. As the political heat is turned up, we suddenly but not surprisingly have those that want to bemoan it as not responsible because it uses reserves to balance expenses. This has been done in the past, and as I also questioned it at that time, as non-structural revenue, the mayor has been able to replenish reserves every year with free cash. Without use of reserves, we would have layoffs, especially in the schools, with health, especially in the schools, with health costs extremely high this year and increased education special ed costs, the mayor was still able to maintain level services, and no one is losing their jobs. We have free cash because of conservative revenue estimates and conservative spending by departments which returns funds. I feel the mayor's budget is a necessary one, and although it may be that future budgets will need more fiscal constraint, it gives the city hope for the coming year. You don't lose staff, you don't lose teachers, you don't have protesters, and you do have the school committee's support, and you don't have to ask for an override, which we haven't done since 2008, and that failed miserably. Please pass it without any cuts, as that would lead to the layoffs that the mayor has always avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on the nick of time. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Jeanne Powell-Wilson. I'm on Main Street, and I just wanted to also, as somebody had said before, I wanted to just recommend that you have meetings, that all the city meetings be hybrid. Sometimes, if you just have meetings that are only virtual, then that seems to exclude people who do not have access to a link, or who do not have a phone, or who do not have internet access. If we're trying to encourage participation for people to be involved, then that would be the way, one of the ways to do it. On the other hand, some meetings are in-person only, and so then that makes it difficult for people to participate. If they're somewhere else, they may be able to participate if it were remote. So again, I just wanted to propose that all meetings be hybrid. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I will close public speak, and I will use my privilege as president to rearrange the order of our agenda, and I am going to bring us to appointments. I feel like we have some people here that might be waiting for an appointment, so I would like to do that before we go into our public hearings. So councillor Smith, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We actually have three appointees that I would like to discuss and move forward to the full council this evening. The first one is Samantha Mater for the Board of Health with a term expiration of 12/31/27. Samantha Mater had come up before as an applicant, and we had gone through the process of approving her, and then she had to withdraw from the process, so she was able to rejoin. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time recounting her credentials. The next one, would you like me to move them forward all at the same time?
I think maybe the two that are, can do individually.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the next appointee is Maddie Palmer for the Assistant City Clerk with a term expiration of April 1st, 2028. Just as a little background, Maddie double majored in history and political science at the University of North Alabama, and then she came up north in, right around the pandemic time, to study paralegal studies, got a paralegal studies certificate from Boston University in 2022. So she's been working with Mary Ann in this past month, and this is the formal approval to have her approved by the city council. And with these two nominations, I would like to make a motion to move the names to the full council for consideration.
Second.
Good, so we have a motion to approve the two aforementioned people, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
Take us to our big one.
Okay, our third appointment, our third appointment is Chad Alexander for the position of Chief of Police. To give you a little background, Chad Alexander is a lifelong East Hampton resident, and he has served for 22 years on the police force after having been hired at the age of 18. So really has spent his entire adulthood with our police force, and he's also embedded within our community. He has two children who go to school at Mountain View School. When we were interviewing Mr. Alexander for this position, we asked a lot of difficult questions that are on the record to review, but some of the things that I really want to highlight is that Mr. Alexander spoke a lot about community outreach and being a presence within the community. He has already been a part of organizing many community events such as Coffee with a Cop, Lids for Kids, the Military Banner Program, and then Barbecue with the Cop. So he had spoken to future plans such as having more walking patrols throughout the downtown area, and we had a fruitful discussion during our meeting. And I wanted to offer a chance for my colleague, Brad Riley, who was also at the Appointments Committee. Did I miss anything that we better make sure we say?
Yeah, I guess I would just say, you know, we peppered Mr. Alexander with a lot of questions concerning issues that are very important to the community of East Hampton. You know, we did a thorough review of federal and state court cases related to immigration and what the role is of police officers in East Hampton. He fully understands what the legal framework is for policing as it relates to immigration. I felt that he answered all of the questions in a way that was more than sufficient. He also talked about, you know, some, you know, I'll just say, I approached the topic of what happened with the fire department two years ago, where there were some issues of sexual misconduct that were happening, and that the police department and the fire department immediately acted. They listened to the women that worked in the workforce, and they dealt with the situation in the way that you would expect our leaders to do. He was obviously there when all of that work was ongoing. He reaffirmed that that would be a similar stance under his leadership. And I mean, just, you know, all the questions about community policing, how to engage with youth, you know, even making, you know, data-driven decisions in tandem with the city council on how to best formulate policies. So I, we gave everything that we could possibly give in this process, and he handled every question exactly as I would have liked him to answer them. You know, I know that Mr. Alexander has, you know, prepared remarks that he'd like to deliver to the full council, and, you know, please, if you do have questions, ask them, but I can't think of somebody who is more qualified and prepared to be our Chief of Police than he is.
Thank you. And I think this might be an appropriate time, if you'd like to come up and address the council. Thank you.
Councillor Smith and councillor Riley stole my thunder about everything that happened earlier, but good evening, everyone. My name's Chad Alexander. I'd like to thank the entire city council for hosting me in your chambers tonight and considering me for the next Chief of Police for the city of East Hampton. I'd also like to thank Mayor LaChapelle for selecting me through a very thorough selection process completed by public safety consultants. And a special thanks to my family, friends, and numerous members of the police department that are here to support me, as well as all the members of the community who voiced their support throughout the entire selection process. The Appointment Committee made up of councillor Smith, Riley, and Jazick hosted me this past Monday evening. We spoke about several important issues within the city of East Hampton, as well as national topics. One very important topic we discussed was the possibility of ICE coming to town on a civil detainer. I want to be clear, the East Hampton Police Department has not, and we will not, work with ICE with any such request. I also express the importance of equality in policing and assure you all that everyone will be treated equally, with dignity, regardless of race, background, or neighborhood. Further, we discussed things that the department has recently been doing and plans that I have, as I assume, leadership of the department. The command staff has already begun working and implementing a new hiring and promotional process, which is aimed at fair and open recruitment and promotional procedures, as well as continued diversification within our department. We also plan on continuing to reduce our carbon footprint by adding hybrid and electric vehicles to our fleet, replacing them with the gas vehicles, as well as applying for any grant funding available for personnel and equipment. I further discussed my three most important goals that I hope to achieve in my first year as chief. First, traffic safety along with bicycle and pedestrian safety is of key importance to our community. Growing up on Hendrick Street, a busy street with vehicles traveling at high rates of speed with no sidewalks, showed me at a young age the importance of traffic and pedestrian safety. As our community continues to welcome families of young children, as well as numerous visitors to our vibrant community, my goal is for our department to make East Hampton's streets as safe as possible. I plan on having a permanent, full-time officer assigned solely to Traffic Patrol to field any and all complaints about traffic in a timely and efficient fashion while also providing proactive traffic safety measures. Another important topic for me is community policing, community outreach, and giving back to the community. Throughout my career, I am responsible for starting East Hampton Police's Coffee with a Cop, Cookout with a Cop, Military Banner Program, and several other initiatives. Coffee with a Cop is back to regular meetings with our community, with our next event tomorrow morning from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Community Center. I urge the public to keep an eye on our social media for any future events, as it will be a monthly event. Finally, Deputy Chief Scribner will be assuming the role of our accreditation manager as our department begins its efforts to achieve certification and accreditation through the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. These are very exciting times, not only for me, but our entire department, as we begin the next chapter of the East Hampton Police Department. I thank you all again for hosting me this evening, and I humbly ask for your vote of approval to become the next police chief of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And councillor Smith, I think this would be an appropriate time for a motion, unless anybody has any questions.
Before I make a motion, I wanted to give councillor Jazick also an opportunity to talk, because the three of us were the ones at the meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you. I don't have much else to add beyond what my fellow councillors shared already. I'll just say that as a new councillor in this role, my dealings with hopefully soon-to-be Chief Alexander have always been very pleasant, very prompt, and very responsive, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Okay. So without further ado, I would like to forward Chad Alexander for the position of Chief of Police for the city of East Hampton.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to jump back on track, and we're going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it looks like councillor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we have two, we have a supplemental appropriation and an interdepartmental transfer to consider tonight. I'll start with the supplemental appropriation. It is, is, is Mr. Nudelman here?
Oh, let me see. Maybe someone called.
I see a hand. Okay, in the back. Yeah, well, anyway, it's an appropriation of $41,916 from Capital Stabilization, and it would go towards funding a shortfall between the grant funding amount and the prior appropriation that we voted on a little while back for the repair work on the Man-Hand Rail Trail. So, you know, these things happen sometimes where we already did an appropriation, we got the bids in, and just, it's the tough world out there in municipal construction, so they're going to need a little bit of extra money. If anyone wants to see details on the specifics, I'm sure that Mr. Nudelman can fill them in, but that's the gist of it, is that it's, if we want the rail trail prepared, we're going to have to spend it, and I think we can all agree that sort of the economic benefits that we get from that rail trail being safe to utilize are probably a lot bigger than $41,000, so we voted three to zero to approve this appropriation.
Great, great. Does any councillors have any questions? Councillor Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So do we know, is this the final amount, or is this like a periodic updated amount that we would be, you know, like, will we come back with more money requests in the future?
I believe the answer is no, but I'll, do you want to fill that in again?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Nudelman, Director of Public Works. For this project, yes, we will not be back for looking for any more funding.
Okay.
Be back for funding for other city projects.
Sure, sure. This will be it. This $41,000 will cover all municipal construction for the rest of the time. We're so lucky, we've got a great deal.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other councillors have any questions for Director Nudelman, or does anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I guess we could get a motion on the table.
All right, I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $41,916 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $41,916, to be transferred to Mass Trails Grant Program Revenue, $41,916. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This funding will cover a shortfall between the grant funding amount prior appropriation friends of the rail trail donation and the total project construction cost for the Man-Hand Rail Trail pavement restoration and repair project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes. Thank you, councillor Peak, and it looks like interdepartmental transfer is next.
Great. Yes, so this interdepartmental transfer is just a matter of, we, as you know, we've had some instability at the treasurer's position and some turnover there, and in the process, it was noticed that there was, there was some FY24 credit card charges that had not been paid. So since that was a prior fiscal year, it's not something that can be paid out of that budget, so we've been assured that that is not going to be a challenge going forward, but it, we're, it's just, we're just going to have to pay those off.
Right. Any questions from councillors? Is this one of the ones that where there was like, something was bought that was supposed to be tax-free?
I think that was part of it.
And it wasn't? And we can't pay tax?
Yeah, we, we.
So it sat on the credit card bill?
That might have been.
Good evening, councillors. Mike Owens, Procurement Officer, Interim Treasurer. I did a, as the interim treasurer, I'm now the administrator of the city's credit card. I found some administrative issues that need to be tightened up. These include timely issuance of the POs, sales tax appearing on our statements, which we don't pay, annual auto pays, and timely receipts of the payment by the credit card company. Taking some measures to tighten up all those procedures and to avoid this happening in the future. But this is an interdepartmental transfer, requires your approval, because it's a prior year expense.
Right. And so we probably shouldn't expect to see anything like this.
I'm hoping this will not occur in the future. In fact, the measures I'm going to, I'm going to take to tighten up these administrative procedures will hopefully avoid this in the future.
Great, appreciate that. Any other questions from councillors?
Quick question.
Councillor.
Just a quick question. This is from FY24, so it's pretty old, and we're pretty much into FY25. It's almost over.
Yes.
So, kind of an old bill. Might accrue some interest over time, and I know we didn't pay the bill because there was taxes. Was there anything that happened in terms of, did the credit card consent, conceded because we don't pay taxes, or was that something?
We're still dealing with that vendor that put sales tax on that, on that particular purchase to have that removed from this, this account, our credit card. We're having some difficulty in dealing with that vendor. Some of the steps I'm going to take is to ask people, when they do get permission to use the credit card, to look very carefully at their shopping cart at the end of the purchase.
Right.
Look at the totals, make sure there's no sales tax on there. I issue the ST5, the ST5C, and the city's tax-exempt number to any vendor, any city vendor who requires it. I do this probably three or four times a month for vendors on request of city employees.
So that's more of a vendor issue than annual credit card?
It's a vendor issue rather than the credit card issue, yeah.
Are not paying the bill to the credit card company, well.
Mm-hmm. I've also found issues with the, you know, the payment not arriving at the PO box by the due date because of US mail issues.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've noticed, but the US mail does not, first-class mail does not arrive in four to five days anymore. It's about seven to nine days. So, you know, this is all about when a purchase is made within the billing cycle of the, of the credit card.
Right.
Our cycle ends on the 14th of the month. It's about timely payment and processing of the POs. And I had an auto pay come up on the credit card two weeks ago. I went directly to the department responsible for that and said, hey, you guys have to put this on a calendar reminder, because if I miss it, and you guys don't have it on a calendar reminder, it's not going to get processed in a timely manner.
I'm glad to see you're on, you're on top of that.
That's my goal, is to tighten up those administrative procedures, so we don't deal with this in the future.
Thank you, Michael.
Councillor Denham.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, acting treasurer Owens, that I really appreciate you stepping into a difficult situation and filling that role and getting on top of some of these things that you weren't aware of, and we're kind of figuring out and addressing them as quickly as possible, so appreciate you and all the work that you've done in the last few months to kind of do your job and take on some of these other pieces. I think that's, that's very gracious of you to help us out with that.
It's important work, I enjoy it, so.
Yep, thank you.
Any other thoughts from councillors? Anybody from the public? Okay, I would also say that we know that this was something that was inherited. All right, so if there's no questions, no comments, I guess we could entertain a motion.
Right, I'll make this.
Thanks, have a great night.
Thank you. I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following interdepartmental transfer. Amount requested, $822.77 to be transferred from Professional Services, $822.77 to be transferred to Tax Refund Interest, $822.77. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Payment processing for FY24 credit card charges in the amount of $822.77.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Motion passes.
Move to close the public hearings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so public hearings are closed. Thank you, everybody. We don't have any items for immediate attention. Communications from elected boards and commissions, does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move that to, we don't have any correspondence, president, vice president, communications. I know councillor Kuzinski has an announcement.
I just wanted to be sure everyone was aware and cognizant of the step-off time for Memorial Day Parade here in the, in the community on Monday at 10:30 a.m., starting at Cottage Street and going Clark Street to Cottage, to Union, around the Rotary at Main, and then to the park next to the Emily Williston Library. Two East Hampton residents who gave the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam are being honored, Donald Ashton and George LePain. I would ask that we all just give a quick moment of silence at this time in honor.
I would ask that we all just give a quick moment of silence at this time in honor. Thank you, everyone. Hope to see you there.
Okay. Thank you, Council Krasinski. Mayor, Communications. Not a mayor. Welcome.
I learned to watch the meeting downstairs online, so I knew when to come up. Yes, so I wanted to, I submitted a memo to have the City Council review Sandwich Board sign regulations. David Gardner, our building commissioner, had a complaint and concern about where a sandwich board was placed. He went out and did the measurement that we now have, which is standard ADA. It's 36 inches, which is very tight. So technically, the sandwich board where it was on the sidewalk met our, our space requirement, but really wasn't sufficient. So, that was the first reason we're, we have concerns around that space requirement, not only because some of our sidewalks are very narrow, they are not flat. So, extra space to get up and down and especially in the side streets to get to Union Street in particular. So that was one request for the review. The other is there is a fee associated to a sandwich board that's $200, and David thought that that was excessive. I agree. Especially for small businesses, a lot of times sandwich boards, and you sent in one, bring notice to the business, but also advertise sales and what's going on, and some of them are just really pretty. So we would request a review on the space requirements, but also the fee. And Commissioner Gardner is out of the office, but is happy to attend whatever meeting to talk about what the fees are in other communities and, and talk about with and whatnot at the council's leisure. So I would just appreciate a review when, I know you guys are really busy and ordinance has a lot going on, but when it can happen.
Good. Thank you. All right, so it looks like we are down to our council communications from standing committees, finance, Council Pete, and if you want, you can move your new business after your report too.
Sure. Okay, great, thanks. Just one thing, do we have a printout of those? Do you have that over there, Mary, the language for the new business?
The police, yeah.
The police.
I think, I gave copies, I believe, maybe they're in JP's pile, they're kind of thick copies. They have the police badge in the corner, there's three of them.
Thank you.
There's three of them.
Two, well, before I get to that, we've been meeting quite a bit to discuss the budget. We've heard from all of the departments. I'm very grateful to everyone for all the hard work they put into this budget. There's a few questions just about sort of the long-term stability that I think we're gonna have to think about hard over this weekend because our next, our final budget meeting is this coming a week from today. And so I would encourage anyone who wants to be part of that process or has any input to, if you haven't already, review maybe some of the meetings that we've had so far or get in touch and ask any questions. Not that you wouldn't be able to propose anything at the full hearing, but it's often easier if we can talk about these things in committee. So, yeah, but that'll be our, that'll be the last one, and then I believe we've, we've already scheduled a public hearing for, for the budget, for our next council meeting, so we don't have to do that now. So, yeah.
Is that, when is that meeting, is it Wednesday or typical?
Wednesday, typical time.
Okay.
5:30. So, yeah, that'll be the last one, and I'm, I think that's about it.
And I would also just, if, I would just appreciate the Finance Committee for the work that you, the questions were thoughtful, I thought, I thought that in the budget meetings, and I think that one of the important things to just highlight what you said was that if any of us have any thoughts, to make sure we go to that meeting, because I know the mayor kind of expressed that if there were to be any changes, you know, that that would be, have to be something that would be a collaborative process, so, you know, if there was any thoughts on that, I think it would be important to get those out there.
Yeah, I generally think that, you know, I mean, it's our, it's, it's the mayor's responsibility to come up with a budget, and then it's our responsibility to look at it and, you know, propose any, we can't move money, we can't increase money, but if there's places where we think that things should be decreased, then it's our responsibility to do so. And I think that, you know, if that's a conversation that people want to have, then I think the earlier that I, that we have those conversations, the better. But that being said, yeah, I will be meeting and taking our votes on that matter in a week, so. With that said, I have three new appropriations, which I'll read as new business as a first reading, and I'll set a public hearing for all three of these for our next meeting, whichever is June 4.
Haynes and Free Cash has not been certified, so we can't have that on the board.
Oh, it hasn't been certified? It was submitted.
And you have to vote for the budget.
So I will schedule a public hearing, I'll just move these into, I'll just move these to Finance, and then we'll address them when we do, and we'll have a, we'll schedule a public hearing once Free Cash is certified, which hopefully is quite soon. All right, so this is just, I'm just gonna do these all as first reading. I'll do it as a single motion, just to save us a little time. So, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $110,518.45 to be transferred from Free Cash, $110,518.45 to be transferred to Dispatch Equipment, $110,518.45. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. To cover a shortfall in the FY25 RECC Development Grant Budget. We requested $466,779 for upgrade, upgraded dispatch radio consoles based on a quote from Goose Town Communications, were only awarded $357,492, leaving the difference of $108,515.79. Project costs with Evan's consults exceeded the grant award by $2,002.73 due to unforeseen increases in material costs. The Police Department writes some long veratives. So, okay. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $144,011.14 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Police Base Pay, $8,561.4, Police Overtime, $75,000, Police Sick Leave, $31,675.85, Police Unused Vacation, $10,273.25, Police Medical Expense, $1,945, Police Union Expense, $1,556, Police Auto Expense, $12,600, Police Dues, $2,400. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes. To cover the cost of contractual payouts for the retirement of Staff Sergeant Brian Ross, to cover a shortfall in the FY25 overtime as a result of one officer on maternity leave, three officers on paid parental leave, one officer that attended 12 weeks of K-9 training, one officer on military deployment for nine months, two officers with monthly weakened military training, one officer assigned to field training and minimal special officers available due to Police Reform Bill and post requirements, as well as a new hire that may need to attend the Police Academy to cover the cost of medical exams and uniformed gear for two new hires, the cost of anticipated auto supply and repair expenses for the remainder of FY25, and the cost for the contractual obligation of MPA Legal Defense Fund dues for aid supervisors.
Okay.
One more. Request is hereby made for the following, the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $2,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Animal Control Professional Services, $2,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. To cover a shortfall in the FY25 ACO Professional Services as a result of increased costs to share animal control and animal shelter services with the city of Westfield. The monthly fee has increased by $132.22 effective 11/18/24. There are also additional monthly fees that, which can include boarding and medical fees, cost per call of services, rabies testing, associated shipping costs, kennel inspection fees, et cetera. Second.
Okay, we have three motions and seconds for all of them. Do we have any further discussions on moving these to Finance? Okay, all those in favor? Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes. Thank you, Council Pete. Does that conclude?
That concludes.
Do a motion to have a public hearing for the budget.
I thought we already did that? No? Well, then we definitely should. Let's just be safe about it. We kind of think we did.
It was advertised, but I didn't know.
Yeah, let's make sure we do it just to cover our bases.
Okay, I move to set a public hearing for the FY26 budget at our next meeting on June 4th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes. Now I think we can conclude this. Thanks, Council Pete. Public Safety, Council Terrell?
We have not met since our last meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Thus concludes.
Thank you. Appointments, Councilor Smith?
And no further business, so thus concludes.
Okay. Ordinance, Council Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met recently to continue to go through the, a review of the, I'm sorry, our review of the zoning ordinance amendments that were proposed by the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. So we went through those, continuing that conversation with that as well. We haven't met regarding the short-term rental since our last meeting for that, which, because we've been waiting for communication from the city solicitor, which we now have, so we will be having a meeting for that. The other items on here, just because of those two kind of large items we haven't gotten to, and still waiting for communication from the Agricultural Commission on their recommendation. We do have two meetings that we are, have set. The first one is June 9th at 6:00 p.m., and we'll be talking about the short-term rental ordinance, and we will be discussing the recommendations and edits from the city solicitor, so hope to be able to wrap that up and bring that back to council after that. And then on June 10th at 5:00 p.m., we'll be discussing the zoning ordinance amendments. Both of those meetings will take place in Conference Room 1, and I hope folks can, can attend that if they have concerns or anything like that. I do need to extend the Ordinance Review Committee's final report for 90 days, and that's in the form of a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to extend the zoning ordinance amendments, 90 days or recommendations. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions or noes? Okay, motion passes.
And that's everything that our committee has to offer, good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Council Denham. Property, Councilor, I guess Pete will take it tonight?
I think I will be taking it because it turns out I'm the chair of that committee.
So it makes sense then.
It would make sense that I would take it, in the future too. We have not met since our last meeting, so no report.
All right, appreciate that. Chair, Pete. And Rules of Government Relations, Council Krasinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the mayor's compensation and that issue, we did another cake at it at our last meeting and have sent that on to the city attorney awaiting word on that. I do anticipate that we may have something for the next city council meeting if the agenda isn't too busy. If it is, we can probably delay until the middle of the month. Regarding the creation of the nine-member rent study committee, we met, discussed the merits of the subject and decided with a recommendation of three to zero to recommend that the, this council move forward with the rent study committee. I think the job of the president will be to have a committee that is well-balanced in terms of the interests of the community. I'm thinking of the business community, the small landlords, the larger landlords, the folks who are tenants in, in the community, a mix of councilors, really in order to have a productive group. If it's weighted too much to any one side, I think that it won't be as productive and not as much buy-in. That, I think, was the bottom line. Council Jancik, was there anything else to add to the?
No, we, we discussed in the proposal, there is a clearly laid-out recommendation for how to balance the nine members of the committee, and I think it's made clear that there are enough voices for a wide variety of different interests that would be represented there.
That'll be your task, should we pass it. Our recommendation was to move forward three to zero.
Do you have a motion?
I move to establish with the rent study committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
As proposed.
To establish the creation of a nine-member rent study committee as proposed. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes, and I thank you for putting that on my plate.
You're welcome.
And I don't.
You were a co-sponsor.
I know. Okay, so we don't have any old business or pending business, and we have taken care of new business, so that means I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Efficient tonight, we're efficient.